This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
So seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee at 6:32 PM on Thursday, September 22nd. We'll take a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling?
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord present.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer present.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser present.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan present.
And McDonald present. And also present, we have Dr. Morris and CeeLo Sharkest, who is taking notes for us. Thank you very much.
And Sarah Beth Kenny present.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kenny. Ms. Kenny, present.
Present.
I usually have my list written out before we start, and I didn't do that tonight, so that's what apologies. Great. So we'll move on to public comments. We are being livestreamed on Amherst Media, Channel 15 in Amherst, as well as online on Amherst Media's website. The public comment that we've received by email is posted already on the school website, on the Regional School Committee Agendas page. And so folks that can't see can follow along from home, and I will present that now. So we have one written comment and three voicemails. Can everybody see that? Okay. And now we'll move to the voice messages.
This is Aaron Scanlon Amy, Amherst parent of two middle schoolers and one high school student, calling in with serious concerns about the lack of logic in the current plan for partially reopening the middle and high schools. My information is only up to date as of the last announcement from the schools on Friday, the 11th, but I haven't seen any updates since then. The tentative plan on Friday, the 11th tightened very reasonable thresholds for reopening school, down to 28 new cases per week per 100,000 people and a 2.5% test positivity rate. We should note that as of September 14th, the numbers for Hampshire, Franklin, and Hampden Counties were well below both those numbers at under 16 per 100,000 and less than 1% positivity rate. So my big question is this, why on earth are we not moving to reopen schools now? Let's let this sink in. We already met the tighter thresholds. What is stopping us from reopening? I cannot imagine. There may be reasons, but as a parent, I am in the dark, and without knowing what the school committee and the union are weighing, I can only guess why my kids cannot go to school. As a teacher myself in another district that has reopened hybrid, I know there are billion considerations to reopening, but I know Amherst must have the capacity to do at least one day a week in school in the middle and high schools, because that's been in the plans for months. Finally, I again cannot fathom why the original date for giving middle and high school kids two days a week in school was pushed back from January to February. Why would we wait until February, another month, to think about two days a week? If we knew we had the logistics worked out for January, why the delay? Giving our kids the education and care they deserve should be based on hard COVID numbers, not arbitrary dates. If the logistics are worked out for one and two days a week in school, get rid of the dates. Again, I don't know the details all the schools in our district have to plan for, but there's no need to wait till November. Your procedures are in place. Let our kids back in school.
My name is Rebecca Klaus. I live in Sunderland, and I teach at Wildwood Elementary School. This is public comment for the school committee meeting. While some students have been happily engaged in remote learning this week, others have missed this opportunity. Late this summer, the Amherst Pelham Regional School District Tech Department emailed a survey to families to find out what they needed for remote instruction. The tech department then notified families, again by email, about pickup times for Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots. The issue with the survey and the follow-up email is they were sent out in only two languages, English and Spanish. Many families in the district speak other languages, and their linguistic needs and rights were not considered. I struggle to understand why this happened, as the school district knows the languages that families speak, as this information is collected with students registered to attend school. The district digital record-keeping system, Power School, has a field that can be checked off for families that require and in some cases, oral translation of information sent home by school. As teachers, we work hard all year to ensure that information that we share is provided in a language they can understand, and we believe that communication coming from the district level should be held to the same standard. This summer, I don't know who, if anyone, was tasked with ensuring that oral or written translation of the technology need survey was provided to families. The result has been disastrous for a handful of families at Amherst. I loaned my own personal devices to two students so that they did not miss the first day of school. No, it's not from children who struggle to log in and cannot join their classmates. To summarize, there are two important issues that the school district needs to address to ensure that we are not creating or further contributing to a digital survive. When surveys go out to families, greater effort needs to be made to ensure that families who do not speak English are included. We need to create systemic change in how we communicate. Number two, the district needs to have a way for teachers to have their voices heard and to advocate for the educational equity needs of our students when we identify serious technology issues. When I have raised specific concerns over the past week, the oral and written answers have been like, oh, look, we're swamped. We've been asking what people need for weeks, and no further student and family tech device requests can be met right now. Instead of hearing these answers, we need to hear what the institutionalized practices are to ensure oral and written communication in the languages and platforms that our families and students can access. We need to make district-wide systemic changes in order to support students who have been basically left out of the start of school, because their families did not have equal access to Wi-Fi and hotspot requests. The school district needs to do a better job. We have all pledged to do a better job, and we must. We must meet all of the needs of all of the children who attend our public schools. People of color need access.
Hello, my name is Alicia Lopez. I just got cut off, and I was leaving a comment before. I'm an Amherst resident with two children at the high school, and I teach at the middle school in Amherst. This is the comment for tonight's school committee meeting. Amherst is currently doing a great job keeping our COVID-19 rates low. I'm worried that once our students begin to return to our school buildings, these rates will rise. In addition, I am very concerned about our school buildings being ready with updated HVAC systems, air filters, and appropriate classrooms for distancing students from one another. Around the country, we have seen schools have to go fully online because of students or staff getting sick with COVID. In addition to being a teacher, I'm a doctoral student at UMass. Because of this, I'm lucky enough to be tested every few weeks for COVID. This kind of testing should be open and available to school employees who have to return to in-school teaching. I encourage Amherst to look into possible partnerships with UMass for this. They have an incredibly easy and efficient process for testing that takes five minutes to complete. As a teacher, I'm incredibly proud of the work the district teachers have done over the summer to prepare for fall remote teaching. Many people know that teachers spend countless hours attending PD and meetings and preparing lessons. From both my role as a teacher and as a parent, I can attest to the fact that this time, Amherst was prepared. The schedule and the work at both ARHS and ARHS were designed in such a way so that students are not as overwhelmed or stressed as they were in the spring. I have full participation of my students right now, who are treating this as a normal school. It is 100 times better overall than the emergency situation we were in last spring. I would urge the school committee to seriously consider whether October 1st is the right time for students to begin phasing in to in-person school. Let's make sure all of our systems and buildings are healthy and updated before we risk the well-being of our students and our staff any more than we have to. Thank you.
And that concludes our public comment. So moving on to our new and continuing business. I will move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of APEA, UFCW, and AFSCME. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, then the chair so declares, I do declare, with the intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Demling. We will take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan aye.
And McDonald's aye. So we are moving, adjourning to executive session. So welcome back to open session. So we'll now move on to item B on our new and continuing business, which is our memorandum of agreements. And we actually do not have one yet for AFSCME, so we are only discussing the UFCW agreement and vote. Should we be sharing that? Can we share that on the screen? So this is the same agreement, the copy of the agreement that was reviewed in executive session, and I will entertain a motion. Mr. Harrington?
I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement between the Amherst Pelham and Amherst Pelham Regional School District and the United Food and Commercial Workers Local 1459 regarding the 2021 school year.
Moved by Harrington. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Harrington, second by Spitzer. Is there any discussion on this? I'm seeing none. So we'll move to a vote, and this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan aye.
And McDonald's aye. The motion passes nine to zero and is approved. Thank you. Moving on to our next item is a virtual private school application and discussion and vote. And Dr. Morris, I don't know if we want to share that also on the screen. I believe it was in the packet as well. And introduce the process and approach, I guess.
Sure. So hopefully it's on the screen. And to make a long story short, private schools in the Commonwealth have to be approved. New private schools have to be approved. I think there actually is a period of time where private schools have to come back for reapproval to their school committee in their member town, in this case in Amherst. And I think the only thing, two things I'll share is one, that to let the school committee know for any private school that applies, the school committee has no liability for something that, you know, what the private school does, as long as the application meets the standards led out by the Commonwealth. In other words, for the common school or other private schools in our district, once approved, they are autonomous and independent, and the school committee is not an overseer of those private schools nor responsible. And as a result of that, in this case and in others, my recommendation would be to approve this private school to open its virtual doors for students. I don't see a reason to prevent it, and it meets the minimum qualifications that the state has. And I would say that to any private school who met those qualifications in any of our member towns. And that's my whole spiel.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Kenny?
I'm just not familiar with the process. Does this have any implications on the public school? How does that, what does the private school end up meaning for the public school?
So for private schools in the Commonwealth, you know, students would be able to attend, and usually, you know, like I use some of the common schools that are currently approved in our catchment area, or the one that is the largest, but there are multiple ones. They can draw from our communities, you know, to private schools, not like charter schools where there's the kind of financial arrangement that charter schools have a set Massachusetts General Law. You know, you do potentially lose some Chapter 70 funds for students there, but the impact is minimal compared to the implications for charter schools within those areas. So, you know, I can't say there's no impact, but I think in general, we, you know, we try to support all of our kids, and for some of our kids, if this is a choice they want to make, you know, my recommendation would be to approve it for that reason.
If there's no other comments or questions or discussion, would entertain a motion. Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the virtual private school application as presented.
I'll second.
Moved by Demling, seconded by Sullivan. We'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan aye.
And McDonald's aye. The motion passes nine to zero. Moving on to our next item, we have the region superintendent evaluation discussion and vote. So I'll kick that off, I think, and then Ms. Spitzer, since you've shepherded the process, but what's in your packets is a summary report of everybody's evaluation submission. The full document, it incorporates all of the summary comments from everybody that was submitted, as well as the ratings on the goals and the standards, as well as a narrative summary of all of the evaluations. There were five individuals from our committee that submitted evaluations. One member submitted an overall rating, as well as an overall summary comment, and the others did not submit, because they were not on the committee for the full year, for the most part. So, Ms. Spitzer, is there anything you would like to add?
No, I want to apologize. It's a small child banging at my door. But I would like to say that thank you to you and Mrs. Stanser for putting this together, and also, I'll keep it at that. Thank you very much.
I would speak, but I want to give other folks a chance to speak. If folks had a chance to read through the report. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say briefly, like, it's obviously, you know, an exception year with COVID disrupting everything in the March, which I think every evaluator spoke to to some degree, which obviously impacts the progress of goals. And so there's this kind of two-thirds split where we're talking about the goals, and then the other third, we're talking about COVID. So, you know, so I'm glad that both of those pieces are in there. I thought the summary comments in particular in this document were a good, a nice, made for a nice read, given that there's so many different points of view offered. And just with the superintendent evaluation in general, I think it's a nice opportunity to just kind of sit back and reflect of where we are with regards to our district leadership and how we're positioned. And it's, I always think it's very noteworthy that there's, you know, and any HR director will tell you this in any district, is that there's a superintendent shortage in the country and generally, but particularly in Massachusetts, where you used to get hundreds of applications for superintendent job, and that's certainly not the case anymore. And so there's a lot of districts right now experiencing a lot of pain, because they have leadership that they didn't have a great relationship with, or a leader that had multiple weaknesses, and then a crisis hits, and, you know, all that's exposed. And, you know, one of the things I really appreciate about Dr. Morris is that I feel like he's exceptionally well-rounded in all of the major areas that you would want a superintendent to be well-rounded in, whether it's the fiscal understanding and capacity, or the academic pedagogy, you know, having come up from his experience as a teacher, this communication and leading the collaborative process, which I feel like is a real strength of his. And then behind that all, you have someone who I feel is really kind-hearted and always puts the well-being of children first and foremost in every discussion. And I really value that, and it's such an excellent fit for our community. I think from ultimately, at the end of the day, from a school committee point of view, what the thing you're looking for is someone you can work with, and someone who's willing to improve themselves. And I think, you know, Dr. Morris has been with us a few years now in this position, and I think he's proven that. Again, I'm very happy that he's with us at this time, and, you know, I look forward to continuing to work with him in the years to come.
I'll also add, one of the things, Mr. Demling, that you mentioned about sort of, you know, someone that we can work with, and that was one of the comments, I think, that came through in almost every single comment from every evaluator, and I would really endorse or echo that sentiment that, you know, particularly in this crisis that we've been dealing with and sort of seen each other every single week for probably the last four or five months. It's been challenging, but I think one of the things that we've really, really seen is that good working relationship, that desire to collaborate with this committee. And several evaluators commented on the transparency and communicativeness and responsiveness throughout. And I think that's notable, and you should be commended on that. I think also we benefited from, and, you know, a lot of the conversation or the comments were focused on what happened since COVID, at least in the summary comments, but I think, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that because of the work that you led the district in up until that point, really helped us and put us in a good position to sort of weather and do well in our working through the crisis and the emergency. You know, from the strategic plan that was completed a year ago, in last year, and sort of the work that was put together to begin action plans to implement it in the buildings, know that that wasn't completely completed, but because of that work, we, you know, the muscle memory was built for having those conversations and focusing on the right things as we navigated through this crisis and the emergency. And I think, you know, we're where we're at because of that work that had happened up until the pandemic. And that goes also with the fiscal planning and the facilities planning, and sort of the team that you're leading in all of those areas, I think, you know, really put us in a solid position so that when it came to this crisis, it didn't all fall apart and crumble. So, thank you. And it was hard to write this, but I think also, as Mr. Demling called it, is a great moment to pause and sort of reflect back on that and look forward to continuing our work as we face the challenges ahead, because this will not be an easy year ahead either. Ms. Spitzer?
It's everybody's experiencing right now, and the working from home and learning from home. I apologize for that. But I did just want to reiterate and thank Dr. Morris for his service this past year. I think one of the things that was challenging, and part of the reason we kept delaying this a little bit, was that, oh, we voted on all of these goals back in September, when the world was a very different place. And I think I would have been very disappointed if we had actually said that he met all of the the things that were on the list that we voted for, because then we wouldn't have been focusing on the right things. So I think one of the things I've been, you know, most grateful for is the ability to pivot and change our direction when we've needed to. And I think everybody, you know, the committee and Dr. Morris will agree, like, things in the spring were hard, and they didn't go 100% like how we wanted to. But I think the thing I appreciate is the constant, you know, striving to reflect on what went well and what didn't go well, and changing, and not to just kind of say, this is how we do it, and this is how we're going to stick to it, you know, like, we've taken down walls in our building. We're investing in ways that, in our, you know, capital planning that we would have never even considered doing, you know, in September, but it was the right thing to do. And I think we're being as flexible as a big bureaucracy, like a regional district can be. So, thank you, and I am glad that we have you as our leader as we're dealing with what's going to be a really difficult year.
Ms. Stanser?
I would just like to add that in going back and reading through all of the documents that we were provided to that review the year, one of the things that really struck me, and I think it's one of the reasons that things went so well in preparing for the start of school, is, Dr. Morris, you trust the people who work for you, and you give them responsibility, and you give them the ability to take leadership roles, and I think that says a lot about you as a leader. And I think, I do think that's one of the reasons that things progressed as well as they did in planning for today. So, thank you.
Does anybody else have comments they would like to add? Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the support and the feedback, and I think, you know, a couple of you noted someone you could work with, and that's a two-way street, right? And so, at the risk of being awkward, but it's the transparent, honest truth, is that, you know, I feel very fortunate to be working with a committee that wants to work with a superintendent that, you know, you know, no district's had an easy time in the last six months. Doesn't exist, right? It's, you know, it's all shades of gray perhaps, but the gray kind of shifted from normal times to where we are today. And so I just want to appreciate, you know, your leadership and being willing to have as many meetings as we've had, and it's really mattered, I think, for me, that, you know, these have become
That, you know, these have become public events, right? The school committees are always public meetings, but I think they're, they've taken on a different life. In COVID times and, you know, people have had to see what felt like hard discussions, uh, on the committee. And, and that's a really good thing, you know? There, there's certain decisions I'm comfortable making, there's certain decisions I was comfortable bringing to the committee because I thought there were committee decisions as elected officials that you all should be weighing with them. And, and, you know, that balance is always hard to strike in normal times. It's really hard to strike, uh, in these times, but I just appreciate your willingness to continue to engage with both me, the public and staff. And it's not easy, you know, it's, um, so in another community, uh, who I know in a different context was thinking of running for school committee, or there was a vacant seat in this district and, in their district. And I said, you know, I think it's, it's incredibly noble service. You make a huge difference, uh, in the life of children, which is, nothing's more important. And how much time do you have willing to dedicate? How many, how many different opinions on the same topic are you willing to, to, to hear and that are in, in direct opposition to one another, you know? And, you know, to me, you've all been very sensitive to the various feedback that you've received and off of it, often it's opposing itself. And so I just appreciate, uh, being public officials who are willing to engage both with the public staff and staff like myself. Because that, that's, that's a critical component of, of the organization's success. And, and by that, I don't mean agreement with me or what I suggest. It, it's actually much more important that we're having authentic dialogue. And I think anyone who watched the number of meetings and the length of the meetings that, you know, this group has had over the last four or five months, you know, can see the work that this group's put in and how painful it's been to make decisions that, um, couldn't address everybody's desires or really needs, I would say, in this time. I mean, there, there is no way to address everyone's needs, uh, all stakeholders' needs and having to make really difficult decisions, but doing it in public and doing it with lots of dialogue and discussion and and a minute, late nights away from family and friends for all of you. So I just want to, you know, share my appreciation that it wasn't like a once a month, we'll check in and might go make those decisions. Cause you know, that, that's not how I want to, you know, operate. And, and certainly from my vantage point, that's been critical to, um, to what we've done over the last few months, you know, for better or worse, but I think mostly for better. Uh, in terms of decisions made and processes used. And, you know, everyone can isolate a moment or two that, you know, like, oh, could we, right? And, and when you meet for a couple hours every single week for a long stretch of time, we're going to have those, those moments. But I think I'm glad we did, uh, collectively have those moments. And I'm glad we worked on things together. And, you know, so I just appreciate everyone in this, this virtual room. You know, all the work that you've done, um, particularly in the, in the virtual context, which is, you know, for some maybe easier, but for many of us not. Um, so, you know, thank you for the feedback and I look forward to working with you in coming weeks on goals for this year. Um, and taking this feedback and trying to think about what, what the next year looks like, which is, you know, going to be, this was a complicated evaluation. I heard many people commenting on that in the evaluations and tonight. And this is going to be the most complicated set of goals because most years, we don't wonder what's going to happen in February in the same way we're wondering that this time around. And so I think it's going to be really critical. We probably spend quite a bit of time on goals, um, because I think what their goals for me as a superintendent coming up, they really end up in this context being goals for, for the district. And what's the critical work that you all feel like, uh, is the most important for the regional schools this year? And, and as there's, you know, all the obvious ones that are COVID-related, but there's, there's huge financial ones. Um, they're going to be coming up that, that are going to be very difficult and challenging conversations with our towns. It wasn't that long ago where that was the critical issue, uh, trying to get four towns to come to an agreement. For those of you who are in the region, went to four town meetings in January and February. You'll remember that, that, that felt like nothing could be a bigger deal. And, and, and now we're in a different world and a different context. I also think that, uh, and I'll, I'll stop. I don't want to be long-winded, more long-winded, I should say. That, you know, education is going to change as a result of this. So how do we actually pause our thinking and say, geez, even if there was a vaccine that was 98% effective tomorrow, would we go back to exactly what we were doing beforehand? And, and, and my answer to that question is no. I think we're learning a lot every single day about how students learn in ways that we were never forced to before. Um, and we should be thinking actively about that. And how do we come out of this challenging situation stronger? And, and, you know, that's going to take a lot of work and a lot of dialogue. And it's going to dovetail with things like sixth grade conversations and all sorts of, of, uh, non, uh, non-small items, uh, to manage. So I think the work ahead is, is going to be, it's going to be a tall climb, but I, I, I think it's going to be really critical to somehow our lives, our work lives pause and really think about what do we want to accomplish, um, in this school year, even that it's, you know, mid to late September now. I, I, I don't feel like that needs to be rushed because I think this isn't a short-term set of challenges that we're facing. So thank you all. Thanks for the collaboration. Thanks for the divergent opinions that make me consider whether that happens in public or one of you contacts me offline and says, hey, you know, I'm thinking about that last night, or when you said this, is that really what you meant? You know, those things are critically helpful. That's how I get better. So, you know, really appreciate all those questions, emails, uh, phone calls, and, you know, we'll keep at it and we'll keep improving.
Thank you. Any further comment or, um, motions? I'm seeing no more discussion. Would somebody like to make a motion? Ms. Spitzer?
I move to approve the 2019-2020 School Committee Evaluation of the Superintendent.
Second?
By Spitzer, seconded by Stanser. We'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Harington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Ms. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes nine to zero. Thank you very much. Great. And now, uh, we are going to call to order the Amherst School Committee. Um, so we have a presence at the quorum, the full committee's here, and, um, I'll call to order this meeting at 7:57 PM. Um, and we will take a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling?
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, present.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. Uh, so our first order of business on the joint agenda is a fall update. From, uh, Dr. Morris.
And I'll try to keep this relatively brief. Um, so the first thing I want to thank Ms. McDonald, she was the school committee representative of Convocation, and I thought did an excellent job during, uh, the goodwill of the committee, uh, to staff, um, last week. It's amazing it was just last week, time, yes, it continues to operate in strange ways these days. Um, but it was a really wonderful event and we had, you know, we did a virtual event, but we had, I think, close to 500 people. Which is the vast majority of staff on the call. Um, the APA president, Ms. Danielle Seltzer, made a very browsing speech, it was, uh, around social justice and equity, which I thought was excellent. But it was really nice to simulate, one of the pieces of feedback that I appreciated, because I went back and forth between doing a video that would be asynchronous, but people liked, even though it was condensed from a normal format, it, and I, I agree with this opinion. It was really, really important that we followed the same routine. So we went and we introduced all the schools and yes, they couldn't shout and clap, but they could write in their chat, go Wildwood and, and things like that. And, you know, it was, it was really valuable and meaningful. I think I shared the, the link with everybody on the committee. But, you know, I really just appreciated everyone kind of transitioning to that, that format and appreciating it in the same way. I, I, you know, as it was starting, I was wondering, is this a good idea? Is this going to be a useful use, good use of time? But, but I think people are hungry for routine and hungry for things that feel familiar, even if it's not quite the same. So I was glad we moved forward with it and, and want to share that. At Convocation, we shared a number of awards that I want to share here in the public, um, realm. So every year there's two, um, chair, Robert Frost Chairs. They're selected by their peers, their high school, high school teachers selected by their peers who exemplify excellence in secondary education. And this year was Jim Elliott and Patricia Taylor from the high school. So congratulations to both of them. At the middle school, the ARMS Educator Award, um, was Ben Levy. Uh, so congratulations to Ben. The Roger L. Wallace Excellence in Teaching Award, which goes to an elementary teacher, the, the board of that, um, foundation decided to give it to all elementary educators for their work, um, from March to June. So we celebrated all educators uh, at the elementary level at all four schools. There were four, four awardees, uh, of the Harold Grinstone Charitable Foundation Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards. This usually comes with, um, a nice reception that they're invited to, you know, in April, that clearly didn't happen. But Kelsey Greer from Pelham, Kristen Iverson from the high school, Victoria Monroe from Wildwood, and Natalie Rodriguez Rivera from Fort River were the four winners, um, for this year. And the last award that was announced was the Community Building Awards. Um, they recognized two employees per year from the entire school district to help faster, help foster a sense of belonging among students who have helped build bridges of understanding and acceptance. Supporting students in social emotional learning can take many forms. And accordingly, I'm reading from their script, it is expected that a wide variety of individuals operating in very different contexts will be nominated. Anyone, you know, can be nominated for this award by their fellow colleagues. And then a, a group that's not, I'm not involved with, selects the most compelling winners. Uh, selects the most compelling nominations to be winners. And this year's where Alex, Alex, Eric Alexander, uh, he was the head custodian here at the middle school, who does, I get to work in the middle school, so I get to see his work. Um, and it's outstanding. And Jerry Champagne from Information Systems, uh, were the two awardees. And they were not informed beforehand because most of the other awards are not surprises, but that one is. There's an anonymous donor and today we found Mr. Champagne. We couldn't find Mr. Alexander, but, uh, they get a beautiful, I don't know, uh, award plaque, um, with clear, with a globe on it and, um, as well as, um, some other things. So just want to thank all of our awardees and, and I wanted to say their names in public. Uh, because we, you know, we couldn't, uh, Convocation is a staff event. A couple of other updates on the backpack project continues, even this different format. So for Phase One families, it's tomorrow. So students will be able to come and families, and they were contacted to pick up backpacks. So thank you for Dr. Gavara and the Family Center for their work on that. Thursday, I believe it's at seven o'clock, CPAC is doing a meet and greet, a virtual meet and greet. So, um, you know, we encourage folks who, uh, are interested in that to attend. I don't know if Mr. Demling has anything else to add as CPAC rep for that one? Yeah, um, the easiest way to get the meeting link is just to send an email to CPAC, C P A C at ARPS.org, and the CPAC chair can send it to you. They're also on Facebook at ARPSCPAC.org. Dash org, that is, but it's, it's open to, to everyone. It's, you know, it's a public meeting and it's, it's for any, you know, particularly good for, um, it's, it's actually one of the best events of the year because it, it, you can connect with other, other families and other parents at the start of the year, you know, being, being a parent of a student with a disability or, um, additional challenges is, it can feel overwhelming and isolating. And, you know, a big part of that, you know, just speaking from my own experience is connecting with other parents and then having that network of support. And CPAC is like the nexus of support, right? To like, connect you with other people. In addition to, to, uh, meeting some great people in the district who work with our students. So, um, it's a really great event. Encourage anybody who, uh, is interested to attend. Couple more, Obed, uh, who you met in the summer a couple of times, uh, where, I think I mentioned, we're fortunate enough that he is continuing to work with us as an independent study of Amherst College. Independent study course that was approved at Amherst College. Our special topics, I think it may be called there. And, um, he's developing and pretty close to having a survey of families, uh, caregivers, and then another one for students. Uh, on both wellbeing, because we are concerned about our students' wellbeing, um, as well as on distance learning. Two different topics, um, but we figure people get survey fatigue. So if we can make them short enough and combine them to one, we, we get better data back. So, uh, we, we intend to offer that multiple times throughout the years. We're getting a, a nice, reading the thermometer of how our families are feeling, how our students are feeling and how distance learning is going. So I think it's reasonable by the time it's translated, probably the first week in October, we'll have the first, first, um, send out of that. And we'll bring that survey data back, both to, you know, to you all and then the public. So we can get a sense, because we, we did hear lots of concerns that continue about the wellbeing of our students. We also, you know, want to get feedback on distance learning and how different it is than what people experienced last spring. And we're using some of the same survey questions. So we can, we can have some quantitative comparisons as well as qualitative information that comes our way. So I want to thank Obed for continuing to work with us, Amherst College for letting him work with us. Um, and, uh, you know, we'll have that. You know, and I wanted to end by saying we're, we're roughly a week into the school year, you know, um, we started, you know, about a week ago. And in general, uh, compared, there's numerous comments I've received that this feels really different than last spring. So I want to thank our, our staff members who went through intensive professional development, uh, did a tremendous amount of work from last spring to the summer, to the fall, um, to get ready for that. We want to continue to get that feedback, want to continue to get better. You know, one of the things that we really want to focus on too is for our students at the elementary level who have chosen remote, um, to continue to, to look at that, because so much of the attention and energy does go to the in-person. You know, how many conversations we've had about, um, getting the buildings ready. We certainly care deeply about families who, for a whole variety of reasons, have chosen remote. And, and we're likely to have a public meeting in the next week to continue to see how that's going and continue to gather feedback. Particularly at the K1 and 2, 3 levels, students who are at Phase 1 and Phase 2, uh, now that we have that data, that we can, uh, continue to hear from them as other students return. We want to make sure that they're, you know, feeling and are experiencing school in really positive ways. Um, and, and I know that once students return, a lot of our attention will go to that because of the public health situation. But we want to be really clear with those families that we care deeply about their education and we want to keep them, you know, on the forefront of our minds, uh, even though students will be returning uh, next Thursday. So that's sort of the, the quick update. I think next week when we meet, I'll be able to give a more comprehensive update. Um, but I wanted to do the, a quicker one this evening. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I think Ms. McDonald may be frozen. Maybe Ms. Stanser can, uh, in your role? Oh, Ms. McDonald's back.
Um, Ms. Seeger, do you, Ms. Seeger?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Dr. Morris, I was wondering, I've had a few questions from families in the district about, when seventh graders, seventh through 12th graders return one day a week. Can you talk a little bit about the logistics of why one day a week and, and what it might look like for each grade in school?
Sure. So the one day a week piece would, would provide one day, um, it would actually be two days because we'd be dividing up the school into, into groups, um, uh, of live instruction. And then the other days would be continuing the, the kind of, heavily live synchronous instruction or, or much more than last spring that they've experienced. And the, the thinking there is that, um, one day a week can really support the distance learning that's happening. We want, we know students are missing, many students are missing being in school. And so by starting one day a week, we kind of build that in and start going to a more truly hybrid model for families who are interested in having their children come in, which at the secondary level, the first glance looks about two-thirds. Over time, as our, you know, we get more, um, information data, we can push that to two days a week. At the semesters and at the secondary level, I think the thing to note is the quarters in the semesters loom very large. So we have courses that are a quarter long and we have most of our quarters, which are, or most of our courses, which are semester long. So transitioning mid-quarter or mid-semester, um, to different models would be very challenging for our staff and we think very challenging for students. So the idea of having one day a week is, and, you know, starting remotely, we've, we've talked about before. Um, and then having consistency within a quarter about the instructional model seems really critical. Uh, we do have athletics starting, we are looking, we know some performing arts and other groups are looking to have, um, some meetings outside, which is optional, but is possible. So we are looking at ways where secondary students can be onsite, um, in specific areas, again, with health and safety safeguards, uh, in place. But the, the kind of, the quarter and the semester, we want to maintain whole, uh, as much as we can.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I have two questions. Um, one on, so I guess I'll start with the thing you just mentioned, which was, uh, outside activities. Beyond sports. So this, this was brought up last time. And, um, so it, could you give us an update on how close we are logistically? It's just because I'm looking at the calendar after having, especially after having done my morning walk in the thirties the last few days. And it's like, the, the window for outdoor activities is going to close here in New England. And so I'm, I'm a little anxious about getting the ball rolling logistically for these kids. Um, one for performing arts, but, but also for these clubs, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of, of groups like, like Poku or LGBTQ plus or Best Buddies or Women's Rights. And you know, any one of these things, there might be only a handful of students, but if, if that's like the thing for them, that's, that's really important. And if, even if we, even if it's like these groups can schedule an hour of tent time, you know, once a week, and it only lasts three or four weeks, that could be, that could be a really, you know, important thing.
could be a really, you know, important thing. So if you could give us an update on that, that's my first question. I'll save my second question until after.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so in the tentative agreement that was announced on September 11th, there was a component to that, that allowed for staff members who want to meet with students outside in the ways you mentioned to be able to do it, you know, it needs to be coordinated through the principal, you know, you talked about tent time, and we, you know, we, we want to make sure we, everyone knows where everyone's going to be. We don't want four different groups thinking they're going to be at the tent simultaneously. But at this point, and I did have communications with the APA president today, and appreciate the communication, the collaboration on this, staff members who are interested in moving forward with that, there is nothing barring them from moving forward with voluntary in-person meetings. You know, I think the challenge, of course, is transportation, and so that is a barrier. We live in a geographically large regional district, and so we want to be cautious about that. We talked about that with athletics. The same would be true with performing arts or other clubs. But, you know, in terms of what would be precluding a staff member from meeting with a group of students, it's really just logistics and coordinating with their principal. There's nothing else that is, there's no other barriers from the administrative end.
Ms. McDonald, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, can, can folks see me and hear me?
Yes.
I think, I think my laptop is, I've been having issues all day, so I apologize. So I'm on my iPad, and the screen is weird, I can't, I can see tiny little thumbnails of people, but are there any other questions? Ms. Spitzer?
Sure, and then Mr. Demling.
Thank you. Thanks for that update. I was just curious, given that we had talked about kind of some issues with having enough iPads and having enough Chromebooks, and I was just curious if you could give the committee an update on how that tech rollout's been, and do you, are there steps we need to take to make sure more kids are getting, getting technology? You're muted.
Yep, sorry. The good news is the iPads came in, so we've all, you know, we're, they have to be set up and all that, but, you know, that was good news. I know some districts are waiting many, many more weeks for them. And in terms of Chromebooks, we're feeling okay with our, our load. I, you know, we've had two rounds of Chromebook, actually, really three rounds of Chromebook distribution. The first round was at the school, start, prior to the start of school, we did a Wednesday, Thursday Chromebook distribution, and we do have some hours that are continuing. The Family Center has been a huge resource in, you know, trying to problem solve for families who don't yet have a device, and, you know, I want to thank Dr. Gavara and her team for doing a tremendous amount of outreach to be connecting families who are in need with IS department. It is something that I think when we talk about long-term, and we talk about goals, I do have some concerns. Certain departments in a COVID world are working with the same number of human resources, and they, the, and capacity and the demands have got up measurably. And so it's not the only one, but it is one area that I think, you know, the Family Center, for instance, has done an incredible amount of work, and yet they have other things they need to do other than Chromebook and hotspot distribution. We have ordered more hotspots. Last year, we didn't use all of them, so we didn't purchase more for this year. We assumed that the number would be constant, and that has not proven to be true. So the number of hotspots that are needed is more than 100. Last year, we were, we were, not significantly, but we weren't close to 100. So that is something that we have ordered more and need to get out to, to more folks. So, you know, I think the technology in general, we're doing pretty well on. Is it 100% of all families' requests? You know, I can't say we're quite there, we're close, but the Family Center, again, has been hugely helpful in connecting families with IS department. You know, and I think what, what we're also experiencing, and this is a positive thing, and it goes to the hotspot piece as well, is that this, families are taking things, last spring was the beginning of a pandemic. And so for a lot of families, the overwhelm was there, and for all sorts of really reasonable reasons, it was hard to manage what people were dealing with and school. And I think people are in a much different place where they, you know, they're able to focus more attention on their child's schooling experience. They know the stakes are, you know, somewhat higher, we're approaching this in a much more intentional way. So we're seeing more requests than we received last year, and we don't necessarily think that's because more families don't have a Chromebook. It's, we believe it's actually that more families who perhaps didn't request one last spring for a whole host of reasons, it wasn't where they were, are requesting it. So that is taxing us, but so far on the Chromebook front, we feel pretty okay with our supply.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, thanks. So my second question on remote learning. So, so in short, is, is there more that we can do to help parents and caregivers who are helping students in remote learning? And, and the reason I ask is that some of the feedback that I'm, I'm getting so far about the, the start of the remote year, is that, you know, remote learning is a real challenge for a lot of families to manage, especially the asynchronous parts. You know, like, we all support this idea that we don't want a kid on a screen synchronously six hours in a row. You've, you've made this point multiple times, I think everybody agrees with it. You know, however, you know, asynchronous doesn't mean independent, and, and that's especially, but, you know, but not exclusively true in, in the younger grades. And so, so because that's true, that the parent or the caregiver has to provide that support and be the teacher, which, which is really hard if you're not a teacher, or if you're working from home, or if you're not even at home, because you have to work outside the home, right, which has its own inequities. And I know I'm not pointing out anything new, is we talked about this multiple times before at the committee level, which is why we're prioritizing in-person learning for, for younger grades, but, but here we are, right? And so I don't know if it's really a solvable problem, it's just kind of like the, you know, the aspect of, of the system that we have. But if, if you could just talk about any practical things that we can, other than, you know, here's the website, you know, Good Luck Wayfinding, is there, is there more we can do to help parents who are helping students?
Yeah, I think we do have our distance learning coaches, which are teachers in our district, I think have done a number of sessions that were, you're right, are more on the technical side of things, and yet for many families, they needed support with that, and they, pretty good turnout, and a lot more clicks, the YouTube clicks afterwards on, they did one which was literally like, whoever wants gets on a Google, show you how to get on a Google Meet, and show you what Google Classroom looks like live. They did other ones that were more, you know, sharing screenshots. I think the larger piece is really hard for, for families with young kids. You know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, that there is, there are a few things where we're trying to strike a balance that's as hard as this one, especially for young kids with how much screen time, how much they can tolerate being on live calls, and then what does that look like if they're not on live calls, and what falls on the caregiver versus the teacher? And I think in any instance, the honest, my honest answer, which may not always be well-received, but I've given it multiple times, is that we can't provide childcare, and this isn't exactly what your question is, but I think it relates to it, we can't provide childcare for a seven-year-old in a virtual call, and we also can't, can't provide the same, same educational opportunities as we can on in-person. Some of it's going to have to fall on a caregiver, just because of the age of the kid and the medium. You know, places that have kids on, and you probably all read articles, you know, have, have kind of tried to have kids live all day, especially young kids, it's not just that we don't think it's in, you know, screen time concerns, it just doesn't work. Kids aren't able to do it developmentally, and that also falls back on the caregiver. So it's a really difficult situation. I think your point, the larger point about how to support students is a really critical one. What I've seen and what I've heard is that many of our staff members are starting the year, know, especially of young kids, knowing that family members are standing or sitting right nearby, and are trying to actively provide sort of de facto training by being very explicit with what they're doing, and what students can be doing on, on other times and get outside. You know, I am a little concerned if, if we have kids, I think that's harder when it gets to winter, for a whole host of reasons. You know, some of the breaks, which I think are great in terms of getting outside now, much like in school, you know, getting boots on and jackets and snow pants and all that. We, we left time in the schedule, at the same time, it's not as easy as, yeah, you know, take a 10-minute break and go outside, and what does that look like? And then how does a, how does a caregiver support those breaks, even if they're non-academic? I think, like many things, will get harder as the weather changes. So, you know, it's, it's good food for thought about what the next step would be on the technical challenges, but what are the adaptive challenges of being a caregiver and supporting multiple kids? Because that's, that's the one I hear the most often as a concern, is, it's not necessarily how do I support my second grader, it's how do I support my second grader and fourth grader? And that's a different challenge, and one that, that no one has a fabulous answer for. One of the things that people have appreciated is that everyone has the same lunch and break time in the middle of the day. That's something I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on, and frankly, we didn't have that last year, and it sounds like a small thing, but when families are trying to make lunch and having a time where people are off screens, it really helps when everyone's off a screen. And so, you know, I think there are, have been some things we've done that have been, we've gotten positive feedback, that, you know, some of that planning's helpful, that it's the same start time every day, that both kids start with a morning meeting at 8:45, right? That's, and I'm saying too, there's families with more than two kids in our elementary district. But, you know, it is, you know, a parent described to me the other day that they sit in between the two children who are on either side of, of this person while he's trying to do his work, and that way, if one of them needs him, they can, he can dovetail over, or, you know, drawn over to the one side. But, you know, the person's trying to do their job quite literally, physically, and emotionally in between two elementary children, and, and that's a real challenge. So I think one of the best things we've done, sorry, it's a really long-winded answer, but I think it's a really important point, is trying to build the stamina and build the capacity for students to be more independent. So the wayfinding piece isn't just for families, it's actually so that we help students do the best they can, being more independent. We're still working through some code issues, some teachers have, are still, you know, the transitions, the number of logins, and we're still helping folks with that. But I think that, that's another feature of the beginning work, that we're trying to help students be more independent. And again, the more they're in small groups, the more they can ask questions of teachers and get help, whereas the more they're in a group of 20, it's hard to interrupt the flow of a lesson. Sorry, sorry, it was a long winded, wasn't as linear as I hoped, Peter, but I think you, you're spot on, that it brings about real challenges for students and families.
Any other questions from folks? I can't see anything. Does anybody else see?
Nope. I don't see any.
Okay. I don't see. Are we ready to move on to the next item? Okay. So next up, we have a warrants report. I have three for Amherst. I don't know if Ms. Spitzer, if you have some, but I'll start, since I do have that. So the first is a payroll warrant that I signed on September 18th, approved by my signature, wages subject to Medicare of $635,810.97. I also approved a payroll warrant that I signed on September 15th, for wages subject to Medicare of $641,995.6. And I approved a warrant by my signature to payables in the amount of $341,706.1, dated September 11th, 2020. This includes general fund expenses of $77,149.78, revolving fund expenses of $5,161.50, grant fund expenses of $7,033.07, other fund of $242,191.66, a gift to the school of $178, $170, and capital of $10,000. And as mentioned, that was signed on September 11th. Ms. Spitzer?
I only have one. I authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $377,343.88 for a warrant dated September 11th, 2020. This included general fund expenses of $373,575.39, revolving fund expenses of $3,630.49, and grant, sorry, and other funds in the amount of $138. That's it.
So that is the final subject for the joint meeting. Would somebody from the region like to make a motion?
And move to adjourn the regional school committee?
Moved by Spitzer. I'll second that motion. Then moved by Spitzer, seconded by McDonald. There's no discussion. The roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The region, the regional school committee is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And now we'll move on to the Amherst topics. And we did allow time for public comment, but we have not received the, we played all the public comment in the first portion. There was none that were exclusive to Amherst topics. So we will move on to our next item of business, which is the Amherst Superintendent Evaluation Discussion and Vote. And that report is in your packet as well. This was, this report was drafted by Vice Chair Mr. Demling and myself, and similar to the region, reflect, summarizes the evaluation that were submitted by all committee members. You'll see that the format is very, very similar, and includes the full commentary, summary comments at the, at the back of the, that report. In this one, four committee members submitted evaluations, and one who joined the committee at the very end of the school year did not submit one. And Mr. Demling, would you like to add anything as you helped spearhead this report?
Um, no, not really. I thought it was just, it was just interesting to read, it was like the same, the same theme expressed, expressed four different ways, kind of in the, in the comments and in the ratings about, about the progress of goals and in the, and then the impact of COVID, and then the appreciation for different, different aspects of Dr. Morris's leadership. Yeah, I thought it was, it was, it's interesting. By the time I, I actually, you know, sat down to, to, to write this, and I, you, you said before that this was a hard one to write, I thought this was much harder to talk about than it was to write. Once I actually sat down to write it, I don't know why, I just, once I compartmentalized COVID into that last summary box, then it was, it was kind of easy to sort of, you know, split the two, but, yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty much it. We, you know, the only formatting thing, I guess I would point out from last year that, that we, we did is, we, we did sort of shuffle around the pieces to, to put the summary at the beginning. I think last year, we had the summary at the very end. And since this is a public document, and, and people tend to read the first page if they read something at all, we put all the kind of summary at the beginning. And to try and make the load easier on future chairs and vice chairs, we tried to make, make it as objective as possible. So, so other than the, the first couple of summary paragraphs, which, which you do sort of have to pick, we tried to like, take some from everybody's evaluation to, to make it an expressive statement from the committee, and then, and then include the summary comments just verbatim from, from everyone at the end. That way, you don't have to, you know, stress too much over whose comments to include where, you know? Then you have the, the summary of the qualitative ratings, the summary of the goals, the sort of the, those quantitatively stand for themselves, and then the rest of that. So that's kind of where we landed on that format.
Are there any other, any? There any other, um, any comments that folks would like to add? Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to add my two cents here that, uh, kind of show my appreciation for for Dr. Morris throughout, throughout the entire, uh, school year, which has been quite difficult, but but I think like what I've been most impressed by is is the, uh, mutual faith. You know, like, like his face, faith in staff and clearly students, the the love of students and all, but then then his faith in us has has kind of made it a lot easier. You know, to kind of, kind of reciprocate that and it's made like a real difficult time. His leadership has made this difficult time. I don't want to say easier, but but I guess less burdensome, you know, it's difficult work and it's I don't want to say it's good to see somebody working harder than us, but I I it it's good to have someone working along with us that has that that passion and that drive to keep working. It's it's very, been very motivating. I'm I'm very happy with I'm not happy with the COVID aspect, but I'm 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 happy that we've had like solid leadership throughout, because well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak to the other district, but I'm I'm happy to have Mike throughout this.
Ms. Spitzer, did you have, or Ms. Um, Ms. Lord, sorry.
It's okay. Um, I did not feel comfortable filling out the official form as I started on the school committee after the school was already closed. But, um, I do want to thank you for your leadership, um, your encouragement, your available twenty-four seven. We got to work on that. You know, um, so, yes, thank you. And I think I'm learning a lot from your leadership and I appreciate you.
Mr. Demling.
Yeah, I won't repeat everything I said at the region, you know, nine, five percent of it applies, applies here. Um, I'm just really appreciative to have somebody. And it's like, not not just somebody who's well-rounded and and who works really hard, but but somebody who sincerely cares in an authentic way with with kindness for students, you know, it's like, it's like superintendent isn't just the CEO of a widget factory, right? So we're not just looking for like a, a cold-hearted, efficient you know, person at the top of the food chain. It's, it's, this is, this is a human service industry. It's it's the nurturing of young minds, so you need, you need somebody who approaches it like that. And it's very hard to get someone who who is grounded in that and has all those other requisite skills. Um, and has that collaboration spirit that we just talked about. Um. So I feel, I feel like that that well-roundedness serves you very well. And and Mr. Harrington's point is 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 very well taken, I think. In it's, it's in the crisis times, those high-stress times, where if you have a strained relationship, it's going to get worse. It's and and it's, uh, and it's going to be really hard and it will break. And we've seen, we've literally seen the this the dissolving of superintendent, school committee relationships in neighboring districts as a result of this crisis. Um, and I don't feel like it's, it's, um, it's damaged our relationship when I, I'm speaking of the school committee and superintendent relationship at all. I feel like it's it's actually made it stronger, um, because we've, 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 we've taken it on, um, you know, together to do the, to do the best we can. We've, we've certainly made our our share of mistakes, you know, no, no question, but, um, but I I I I definitely agree with the sentiment Mr. Harrington expressed that, um, it's, it's a lot, um, um. Uh, I'm not, I don't know what I'm trying to say. It's, 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 it's a lot more, um, approachable of 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 a, of a problem uh, to face, get up every morning, every week, every meeting, uh, when you know somebody is is working as hard and, um, wants to collaborate with and with you on it as as much as Dr. Morris does. So I I appreciate that.
I will, I will, um, second that. And, um, like Mr. Demling, I won't repeat everything that I said at the, at the region. Um, but I'll build on something that a couple of you have said, um, uh, is is that combination, which I think is 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 unique and, um, and has been really, really helpful in this crisis and 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 the work. Um, is is that combination of sort of clear-eyed, evidence-based decision-making, but with a a really big heart and and compassionate focus on sort of our most vulnerable students um, and families as, and and really keeping that sort of center on the whole child and the whole student and and not, um, not just sort of the the balance sheet, so to speak. So um, so and that, and all the other comments I said at the region, um, hold true here as well. So thank you. Ms. Spitzer.
I just want to go on the record again. Um, I won't again, repeat everything, but I'd like to recognize, um, your, um, excellent leadership during this really difficult time and and very grateful that we have you as superintendent of the Amherst Schools.
I think now every one of us has said something. So, um, if there's nothing more to add, um, would somebody like to make a motion? Oh, Dr. Morris, sorry, I did, didn't want to.
So, so I I probably aired before, I should probably make comments after a vote, not before it, so. Before, um, but I'll, I'll try to correct it in the, this district.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? Ms. Spitzer.
Yeah, um, I move to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Amherst School Committee Evaluation of the Superintendent as presented.
Lord, second.
Moved by Spitzer and seconded by Lord. The roll call vote, Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously five to zero. Dr. Morris.
Yeah, and I I won't repeat, uh, myself from before from the region, but I I I think the one thing I'd like to add, and I think a couple of people, particularly Mr. Harrington, talked about it is um, I feel really fortunate to have the team, and and so I talked about the school committee before, but just want to acknowledge um, educational leaders and the operational leaders that we have. Um, none of these things are possible. I mean, sometimes someone asked me the other day, like, what do you actually do? And I was like, try to help people do the best job they can. That's essentially what superintendent's jobs are, and and that's, you know, it was a child, so I tried to, you know, developmentally make it appropriate. I was thinking, oh, that's sort of is what I, my job is, and I feel really fortunate to have, uh, have building leaders, central office leaders um, and the staff in general, you know, um, who who are doing the work. I mean, I'll go back to just the nuts and bolts item that, you know, we'll have another report from next this about ventilation testing at the end of the week, and I got a verbal overview of that. Um, and again, for the, for the, for the age, the buildings are vintage, um, in the district. Um, to receive the the results we continue to receive at the elementary level um, is remarkable, and I don't know the first thing, uh, as I often say, as my wife can tell you very clearly, I don't know the first thing about uh, what it means to maintain HVAC equipment, um, that's fifty years old and have it performing well. But but I know people who do. Right? And and I think that's the critical piece of the whole organization, and I think appreciate all the incredibly positive and kind, uh, feedback. And it really comes from a team approach that that we have here. So I just want to, you know, acknowledge everyone who contributes to improving the organization every day, because that's our goal, and thanks to you all for for sharing your perspectives. Uh, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, and with that, uh, we'll entertain another motion. Mr. Demling.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Demling, seconded by Harrington, and I knew the conversation, but I do want to recognize that for the first time, I think, in six months, we are twenty minutes ahead of schedule. So, nice job. Um, so, uh, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, Amherst Media, for all of your support.